So council reports.
I'm sorry.
Nope, Richard.
Thank you, I have nothing to report.
And Kim.
I have nothing, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and Chris. You're gonna talk later, aren't you? You've saved enough.
Yes.
Okay, Kate.
Hi.
Alrighty. So we'll turn some time now on item number three about our fiscal year tentative budget for adoption. And then we'll turn that time over to our esteemed this Mr. Galen Rasmussen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. For us tonight is our tentative budget, which you've all had a chance to look at in various pieces over the last, well, most of April, anyway, half of it, anyway, in various meetings that you've been in with us and with the department heads. As state law requires, the first meeting in May of every year, we need to adopt a tentative budget, what is called as the tentative budget. That's that reason, that's that way for a reason. It's a first look at what we're looking at for expenditures and revenues in the fiscal year. This year, it's been pretty interesting budget, as you know, with the COVID-19 pandemic and the effects that's having on the expenses we have, as well as the revenues that we're getting in or not getting in. And so we have prepared a tentative budget for your consideration tonight, which you've reviewed in individual committee hearings. The document is called the City of Baniffel Operating and Capital Budget for fiscal year 2021. And that's just a snapshot of the budget cover. So I'll just go through a little bit of a slide presentation and it'll just get some of the highlights of the process, as well as the budget itself. The budget process and timetable is outlined there, and it's also in a broader form in the budget document that is of calendar. We'll show you a little bit more details, but through January, March, we do preliminary estimates and projections of the budget where we think it will be, developing revenues and expenses. And then we have a council retreat, which we all went through in January, and received some vision and priorities and policy framework that we worked from, developing a budget. And each department prepared their budget in early February through mid-March. And then we had a management meeting to go over our budget at that point, and some other items that we discussed. And then March, about the middle part of March, we got through with each department, the city manager, myself, and our HR manager, to review their budgets in detail and make adjustments. And that brought us to the council committee budget hearings that you were all part of in April. And we're to May 12th today, which is adopting or considering adoption of a tentative budget. Then following tonight, the tentative budget will be available for public inspection on our website, as well as a hard copy that they can use if they choose to do that. In June, we'll have our public hearings that will go over the budget amendments to the current year budget we're in. If there are adjustments, I'm sure there will be some, that you will be presented with for consideration of adopting, as well as our budget for final fiscal year 2021, after some adjustments that we've overheard just a bit. Then we'll have resolutions and ordinances that will adopt a property tax rate and also our budget document. And then we'll publish the budget for final use and report on a number of different things, some things that we don't necessarily want to go over, but are required by the state. So that's kind of a snapshot of what the process is like. This is a summary of the tentative budget as it stands right now. The city is a complex organization. It has thirty departments, eighteen funds, and covers just about everything in your daily life that you're used to, making sure that you have everything from turning on the lights to the water, to calling for police service, having parks, all the different things that we provide as a city, that our citizens come to expect. The net amount of revenues and expenses are shown there is eighty-one point nine million. And that, you can tell that's not a small amount of money, there's a lot of money involved in that. Our biggest enterprise fund or business-like fund is our light-powered fund. Our biggest general fund department is our police department. So that's just kind of a snapshot there of where we're at for this upcoming fiscal year. Just some key points to take note of for those that are the public that are here as well as you as the council. The final budget is balanced between revenues and expenses, which we refer to every year. The policy priorities that you've stated are restated in the document and addressed as budget proposals. There's no property tax increase proposed in the document, but there are fee increases. Some of those are just outlined there for various departments and funds in the city. Some of these things have been discussed, all of these actually have been discussed in all the budget committees that you are part of. And we've talked a little bit about the balancing act of what do we do and how much and when. And these are things that basically just keep us on parity, being able to provide the services we do, providing for infrastructure replacement and other things that are necessary for keeping the services delivered to the citizens. The budget right now includes a two percent cost of living adjustment for salaries to address inflation and employee merit increases for those of your eligibility requirements. Our medical insurance increase is six percent, which we received from our broker and has been negotiated down to that percent. And each department, in anticipation of the possible cuts, is going to present a five and a ten percent reduction scenario that we can evaluate in making sure that the budget balances when we get to final adoption. Now, just taking a look at the budget at a glance, without going into the weeds too far, the general fund itself is nineteen point six million dollars. That's all of our tax-supported departments, everything from police and streets to administration and so forth. And then I have a change from the prior year's budget, just for your information there. The capital fund is where we fund our streets and roads and larger capital projects that we have in the city. The debt service fund, as you can tell, is very small. That is twenty-five dollars, that's just not rounded, that's just twenty-five dollars. That's because we are not in any general obligation debt. That fund is just basically interest earnings and so forth. Municipal building authorities in a similar state is a fund that was used to construct municipal facilities at the end of day. And now it is just basically interest earnings, so few benefits. The wrap tax fund is eight seventy-eight thousand and change. And Semtric, the virtual care fund, landfill closure fund, for those specialized operations there, other funds. And our enterprise funds, the recycling fund, six hundred and sixty-four thousand. Stormwater fund, one point eight million. Water fund, second largest enterprise fund, five point six million. And the light-powered fund, our largest fund of enterprises, thirty-nine point seven million, just about. Golf fund, one point seven, landfill fund, one point nine, sanitation fund, one point two. And then our cemetery fund there. Our computer replacement fund is seventy-two thousand. That one is used primarily to keep our desktop computers replaced and functional, some of our larger peripheral equipment, that type of thing. Liability insurance fund, workers' compensation fund, round out the, what we call internal service funds that serve the funds of the city, the departments providing services. Some considerations that we might want to have you be aware of in the budget that will be before we receive the final adoption in June. We discussed with you a fund reserve policy and some of the committee hearings that we've had with you. We have, for a long time, had a policy of pay-as-you-go, things were saving money aside to take care of capital improvements and things as we go. And we've had, and the way, long past ago, well, in some people's minds, a long time ago, in the early eighties, there were some fund reserve policies that were adopted for some of our enterprise funds. A couple of those funds, it's been long enough that they no longer exist. In our case, the recreation fund, which is now a separate district, the sewer fund, which is now part of a different district. So we are coming forward to you with, for the final adoption in June, a fund reserve policy, which we've reserved, time and some of our committees for you to take a look at. So we'll need to adopt that in June, as if you are willing to do that. We've also considered some other things that will help us to keep our operations running in our enterprise funds. One of those is a water fund debt forgiveness option. We did loan money from the landfill to the water fund over a year ago. And we could help the water fund if that debt was forgiven. So that's an option that might be of consideration. We also have talked with you about prioritizing rate changes we've talked about, the stormwater fee, the power fee, the stormwater fee, recycling fee, those type of things that we've talked with you about. So there will be probably some prioritization that you'll want to give us some direction on there. And then, looking at our cost of living adjustment, we like to keep pace and to be competitive and pay our employees for the services they provide and being able to help them along, but also we have to make sure that that's affordable to do that. So we need to review that with you and have your input on that as well. And then finally, to round it all out, as I mentioned before, having our departments provide scenarios that we can cut back five and ten percent if needed, being able to balance the budget. So those are some of the things that we want you to be aware of as you go through the budget with us before final adoption. So really, the action we're asking for tonight is what's reported state law and as to consider for adoption is tentative budget document that you've reviewed in council committee and that we've reviewed with each department, and it will be available for public inspection for 2021. And then to set a time and place for a public hearing on that budget. And we're suggesting that that is seven o'clock on June 16th here at the fire department. And that will be a budget hearing to review the budget, as well as some transfers that were made between the funds, and also to talk about our property tax rate, which we hope to have by then, we typically do, and that comes from the county. So that is the presentations I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Anyone for questions from the council?
Comment if I could. First of all, Galen, I want to thank you as the presenter and the rest of staff as the participants in the process that we saw either three or four different methods that we might be able to deal with potential budget shortfalls, which included reducing our budget and prioritizing fees and not immediately jumping to the idea of property tax increase or other things. That's a big deal to Baniffel, so thanks for that. I'm wondering when we get the next estimate on sales tax revenue?
We actually got a, did you wanna, okay, we actually got a preliminary because it was talked about with the state about getting a preliminary work out where we're at. We got that yesterday, actually, the eleventh, that's when they asked for it, we got it then. We have nine more days before it'll be final, so there could be some changes in it. But it was round figures, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars for our distribution for this month. When you compare that with May of the previous year, it's about thirty-six thousand dollars less than that period of time. So that's a kind of a benchmark there, which is about five percent. Interestingly enough, that was the first month where we would have the coronavirus impact on the economy. The April period, just the month before that, compared to the previous April of 2019, was seven point eight percent down. So the percentage drop, month to month, between April and May, compared to two years, was actually less, which is interesting.
Interesting.
So we'll just have to see what the final looks like, but that's what it's at right now.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Do you feel like we'll have between March and April, that there should be actual self-tax data, that might be involved in our budget? Enough to develop a trend line for what the letters may be, our self-tax question?
We're really only gonna have one additional distribution, I think, before we have to adopt the final. We get it on the twenty-fourth of the month of each month. So our next meeting would be the sixteenth of June. I'm gonna get the final one that I just talked about on the twentieth of May. And so we probably won't get that one unless they give us another preliminary. I don't think we'll plan another.
But to maybe give you a level of comfort, we never have maturity at the upcoming year, anyway. Even out of COVID-19, we're always just estimating based on past trends. And so that's part of the reason for the five and ten percent reductions that we're planning administratively to get the take in case something unforeseen happens. So we're not completely flying in the dark, but a little bit more than normal is, I guess, a better way to say it.
We have a pretty good database of history, both in summary form and detail, to where we can look at remitters and that type of thing, just to try to get comparisons there. The most recent time where we had a dip down, it was considerably large, like what we're seeing now, for the potential for it was back in two thousand and eight and nine, when we looked at that. And I don't think it's gonna be too much different than what we've got here. And we were able to balance and still do fine.
Thank you. There are no other questions, I'll look for a motion.
Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion that we adopt, oh, sorry, tentative budget as presented, and that we adopt also, or announce, the time and place for the meeting being June 16th, 2020, at seven PM, here in this room at the South Davis Metro Main Fire Station Training Room.
Second.
Thank you, second by Milling. Any further discussion? All in paper?
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you. We'll turn time now over to Gary to talk about the veterans park.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to meet a couple of student members of the veterans committee to talk about phasing. And I sent the council that time an email about what the phasing plans were and how the veterans committee was looking with regards to raising funds. What we met about was to, so they could clarify for me what phase one would look like versus the ultimate plan. And Galen, can you pull that map up on your computer that shows the red, yeah, the red line sort of version of the park? I really appreciated the time to sit down and talk about what the phases would look like. And some of the issue, of course, is they can't get started until our, that portion of our city hall construction is ready to be, is ready to work. And we're getting off a little close. They're backfilling trenches now and compacting. And so we're getting pretty close to the stage where work could be done on the site, if the council's comfortable with it. There were a couple of conditions that the council had about moving forward on the project. One was that enough money was raised to complete the, well, let me back up. The first was that whatever the first phase was, that it would look like a complete park. The second was that enough money was raised and in the bank or available through contract in time to complete the entire first phase. I think in the information I've sent you and that was shared with me, that the committee's very close to that amount for phase one, but not quite there yet. And then as far as what phase one will look like, we have that on a map in front of us. And so I think what we have before you guys tonight is our couple of things that we would like to have the veterans committee present on and then get some feedback. I think the first is, I'd like to ask them to come up and explain what will be included in phase one and allow you to ask questions about what that, what the park is gonna look like. And then make sure you're comfortable with that, with what it's gonna look like. And then I think part two is, we would like to know if you're comfortable with allowing them to start doing the earthwork on the site while, as soon as we're done with what's going on next to the building. And I can talk a little bit more about that after we talk about what's happening in phase one. If you're comfortable with that, maybe we'll just invite whoever, whoever it is that you'd like to have come up. I don't know if that's the Hattie-Boss, if that's...
Well, let me just make a little opening statement as the chairman of the foundation, if I could. May the twelfth. I'm having trouble with this, I'm sorry. May the twelfth, nineteen sixty-nine, which is today, I boarded an aircraft flying the basic training from this day, fifty-one years ago. And coming down to this meeting, there was a lady with a beautiful little child in her cart, pushing her down the south. That hit me so hard, because fifty-one years ago, I left my wife, little baby, and I flew the basic training in Fort Samhouston in preparation to go to Vietnam. I didn't know, as I saw that little child there, I didn't know if I'd seen him. But again, it hit me so hard. And I apologized, Mayor, when he asked me to give the prayer, I couldn't do it. It hit me so hard that there was a beautiful lady with her child, and it hit me that I am so blessed because I was able to come. And I think that's a lot of the way that veterans feel, quite frankly, is that we were blessed as we went through this time. It's been three years ago since we started preparation for this park. Mayor, leave us the permission to go ahead and look at different sites, which we did. And we came up with a site right now, where we're looking at, right next to the city office building. And I like that site because it's peaceful, it's quiet, and it's a beautiful site in the heart of the city. As of now, we have close to three thousand patrons who've submitted their names to go on the wall. In one day, we had fifty. Fifty. Who's coordinating all of this, to make sure those names are proper and right, is Julie Hattie-Boss, who is the secretary of our foundation. And she is coordinating all of these names to make sure things are done well. We have with us tonight Eric, who is our president, Eric Tidwall, there, heard. We have two vice presidents with us, John Martin Knight and Doug White. Those are right here with us, members of our board. Osman back here, raise your hand, Osman. We have Rob next to him, and we got Mike. These are all members of our board that have, oh, and Rob here in front, I didn't recognize him in his mask. Each one has a responsibility on the board, and so we appreciate what they're doing. Last night, I was sitting on my front porch, and a lady drove into my driveway, and she said, "Are you Chris Simonsen?" And I says, "Yes, I am." She said, "My husband turns eighty-nine this week, I want his name on the wall, how do I do it?" And I told her how, and she started crying. She says, "This is so important to him." We started our 501(c)(3) in November. In six to ninety days to Christmas and Thanksgiving, we have been able to raise close to our seven hundred thousand dollars. That's a lot of money in a short period of time. And so what I would like to do, as we go through this right here, with that kind of background to start with, I'd like to ask Rob Vandergrift, who is the chairman, our architect, he owns Elite. It's not construction, it's elite architecture. Come up here, Rob, come up here, and tell us, Rob is gonna go through this for us. Eric, this is going to be, and tell us what we have with our phase one, would you please?
Okay, so I'm Rob Vandergrift. And thank you, Mayor, for having us around here, and council members, and Gary Gill, thank you. So I'll just go through this park and explain what the red means and what's gonna be there. You can see a lot of little red flags. Well, let's start at the front of the park, where the sign is. We have an eagle right there that we're gonna hold off on phase two or three, so I've blocked that out. We have about thirty-five benches, and right now, we're doing fifteen of those thirty-five. And those are all the blotches, a couple blotches down on both sides of the entrance. You'll see two on one side and two on the other. So those are benches. And then around this outer circle, there's several other benches that are taken out. So we've got fifteen benches sporadic around the park for phase one.
They're already coming.
They are already. We've got the main Columbia statue, our centerpiece in the middle, just about finished. So she's an important part of this park, right off the bat. We've got the "We the People" monument, that this park is all about. If you can point to "We the People," that will be there. The monuments for the different wars and the statues for the different wars will be another phase. The first... Yes, and they're all around the center circle, and there's a couple around our flags. There's the POW monument and the, the Wounded Warriors monument is right around our front flags. That'll be part of another phase. So the park will look like a finished park. We've always known that we would phase this, we just wanted to make it not too long. So we're hoping that by the end of next year, on either Veterans Day or Memorial Day, that we can throw more monuments in. We've got five veteran monuments, and that's why it's not blacked out behind the American flag. There's five veteran wall monuments, they'll house five thousand names. Right now, we have about twenty-five hundred, but this week, we're getting about thirty-five a day. I mean, for some reason, this is picking up. So we're thinking that five thousand, hopefully, that will be enough. But as soon as we need to, we'll add another monument or two. I have a, for what's in May or, May eighteenth is, is that Veterans Day? That's not Veterans Day, Arm Services statues. So that would be a nice time to, a couple more monuments out, because we're gonna have a lot, a lot of veterans' names on the wall. But we're planning on housing at least five thousand right now. So the park will be fully landscaped, it'll have the main sign out front, the "Bountiful Veterans Park." It'll have all the flags and all the landscaping, it'll be complete, it'll look like a park.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
So just, all of phase one, is everything that is shown minus what is in red, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So minus the war monuments, statues, and benches, and some benches. So you just won't have benches so close together, right off the bat, what we'll plan on then.
Except Columbia, Columbia is paid for and will be near on phase one.
Columbia is part of phase one. And the "We the People" monument, I gotta tell you, it's unbelievable. It's being made right now. It's incredible. I know the foundation has seen it, but all I can say is it's gonna be unbelievable. So, anyway. This is a rendition that you guys haven't seen before. What's different about this one is, on the right side is the thirteen-star flag, the colonial flag. Yeah. On the left side, the left entrance, is the Civil War time flag. And then we have the fifty-star flag at the top. You can see the triangle of the flags. They're all United States flags, so they all gotta fly the same height. So we did also add the, the flag for the space, what's that called?
Space Force.
Space Force. So that's a sixth flag in the Space Force. So that is, that is it on what we've...
I have a question.
Yes.
So you're hoping that in like maybe a year, like next May, Memorial Day, or perhaps next Veterans Day, like 2021, that's your estimate of when you'll be done with phase one?
Hey, no, phase one, if all, we are ready to go, phase one will be, we're hoping for November eleventh this year.
This year.
This year. This year.
Cool.
There's got, we have so many veterans that have donated to this park, that it would be a tragedy. My father is one, he's ninety-two years old. Air Force veteran. He donated the Air Force flag, a family bench, and I don't know how long he's gonna be. Anyway.
So Rob, let me ask you, so where are you in the finance, finances for completion of...
where are you in the finance, finances for completion of Phase 1? Mayor, let me talk about that. I have those people...
So any other questions you might have on the trees you're seeing? We're planning on the trees. Everything complete that you see is done.
Sidewalks, everything you see, does it have this blocked out?
And there's no entrance from the east side, correct? You only enter from the west side?
We're here and here.
And we do have the sidewalk coming down the right side that's an existing sidewalk. And we are proposing to put a sidewalk down the left side, that entrance. So if there is people that might park across the street for some event, assuming that COVID will be over someday, that they can have access, safe access from the east side.
Well, and Rob, where those trees are on the left, that is not flat ground, if I understood right from the, from the architecture. That's all a hill.
That's all a berm. It's a city hill, an amphitheater-type setting. The right and the left side is a berm, so people can, the families can come and listen to a program. And we'll make it very easy for the city to mow, because that's important to Rob, and I understand that.
How, oh, go ahead. How, I'm just curious to know, because I imagine my little kids jumping off the little wall down into the circle.
Okay.
I'm just curious to know how, it looks like they're, that retaining wall, not that one.
No.
The one with the benches. Or is that like, oh, okay.
It's just a sitting wall.
Oh, perfect.
So it can be used as a sitting wall? Yeah, so it's not a cobble wall. So the final would be November, 1st of November. We would want to install the monuments. And I would like to have it landscaped by middle of September to let the lawn establish before it's kind of like the second South Park. We wanted to get that lawn established before opening. So it's a three-month, it's a three-month operation if everything goes well, which I anticipate going well. So much of the granite, especially the statues, Columbia is about six months long. Statues take a long time. Granite takes about five months to get here and get done. So we have to plan on things and take the safer route, got the granite coming to pay for it. So, because we have the plan. So, anyway.
So you have three, there's a three months of construction and then 30 to 60 days of letting the lawn and the plants establish before officially.
Right.
Okay, so roughly five months to start to...
To the final, final, to the final, final, right.
My answer to that would be for Gary, what is our realistic timeline on City Hall? In terms of building, the case in terms of City Hall or other types of...
I'm going to pick on Lloyd, but so what we're talking about then is when we can let you start pushing earth and putting core foundations footage, really. Lloyd?
I don't think it's been any secret that the company working out in the north 40, is what I'm going to call it, north of City Hall, has not set any speed records for their work. Now, I don't say that to be critical of what's planned for the Veterans Park. But they are nearing the end, I would think in the next two to three weeks, they'd be wrapped up over there and essentially re-drawing things loose for starting the Veterans Park, degrading and some of the rough work. They're not that far away.
Lloyd, can I ask you a question? The Veterans Park has submitted to you and to MJ a plan, a construction plan that you have to sign up on?
It's in my office. I just got changes back this week. I have, I need to review those. And really, the review process is very short.
So we're pretty close on that? Thank you. Can I talk finances for a few moments? Gary sent you out with Veterans Park summary as of 4/17/2020?
Galen, do you, in that email I sent to you, there was another attachment that had the, I think it's that city statue, I think so, yes. If we're lucky, they sent you the right thing. Scroll on down. And this may not be the final version, the numbers are all the same.
We have updated it.
So.
Now, it's the next page. Here we go.
Thanks, Galen.
So on this page here, you see that we're looking at $853,600 for Phase 1. That's what we estimate the cost is going to cost us. So now donated as of 4/1/2020, we have, we've updated that, and we're at, my notes right? Let's see here. Just move this here. Yes, right there. Phase 1 total cash and in kind is 667,544. We are now at 700,000. So we've gone from 664 to 700,000. And that's without a lot of promoting because of the shutdown. So if you look down here, bottom here, these are pledged donations. Those are individual organizations that have pledged, they will support and send us the money. And you see that we have Larry H. Miller Foundation, I spoke with them today. They have laid off a portion of the foundation, and it's on the list to send us a check. So Larry H. Miller Foundation, it is in the mail. I talked with Randy Elliott at the Davis County. The agreement that we had with the Davis County Commissioners, actually, we presented to them the park, and we did ask for any money. And Commissioners came back and said, "Well, we want to make a donation." And we said, "Well, if we need it down the road, we'll take it." But right now, we're trying to keep everything funded privately. And so, but we do have that 50,000 guaranteed. Bountiful Auto Group guaranteeing, I was talking with a... A correction. Yes. The L line name.
I gotta just stop you for a second.
Yes.
Bob Stevens, and a week ago, said in spite of COVID and other things, they're committed to that 50,000. Just not only Randy Elliott, but also Bob. So this isn't something that was, that they made a commitment on a long time ago, but they're now questioning that. That is, they're planning on that.
They're planning on that, so let's confirm that, thank you, thank you. Bountiful Auto Group, they were going to give us the 80,000 in the May. And talking with them, they've asked us to postpone it till September, that they are committed. They said, "You will receive the money, we guarantee it, and it will be in September from the Bountiful Auto Group." Creekside, we're waiting for their check, they've committed, and that the Creekside will send us the money. We have no worries about them. And maybe, can we, I spoke with them, and they said, "Absolutely, we will get you the money." So I feel very comfortable about that 170,000 that's right there, that we will get that by by summer or by September at the latest. And so as we look at this, if we look at this, I've got this right. Our Phase 1 is 853,000 total. We've raised now 700,000, which leaves us 160,000 that we've had pledged, which would put us at 860,000, which is a few cents over the cost, which is right here. So we feel right now we have 860,000 ready to go. So we feel comfortable about it, those that have committed to it, which would be the pledge. We feel very comfortable with them, that they will come through with it, very quickly. Any questions on finance or management's kind of problem? It's my half.
I'm happy to hear that the donor foundation, the foundation, makes it on their plan. It's like, what worry do you have about the election?
They laid off some, they laid off some donations, but talking to the secretary, she said, "Oh, no, it's booked up."
The other group that I'm just a little bit worried about, then, that COVID impacts auto sales, it's a non-automated.
Well, you know what's interesting, I've talked to an individual in the Auto Group, and he said, "Our truck sales are going through the roof." We sold more trucks since the pandemic than we did all last year. So I think they're doing, I think they're doing well. I think they're doing, they make only maybe $100 a truck at the end.
So the question I have is, you know, they've asked for a lay-in, they didn't make it to December. But if you found yourselves needing that one short, off the curve, and you were, you know, really closing on your Phase 1, is there something that would be easy to pass for Phase 1, so we can finish it? You know, like, I don't know, perhaps the cost of benches or some of the elements are that, you know, you can easily clean, so we still can all finish Phase 1, but
We could.
Just to give us, you know, a better advice.
We could tweak a couple of benches, we could tweak a couple of trees. There's some things we could tweak. We have two very major donors right now trapped in Hawaii. They've reassured us when they get here, you will hear from us.
Are they trapped or enjoying themselves?
No, they can't get out. They can't get out of country. Totally not. They've reassured us that they're going to be here, and they are dedicated to seeing this park happen. So I feel very comfortable that we will have the funding that we believe in.
So Chris, sorry, rather than the 80, you're expecting between now and September to go way by 80?
Yes, regardless, regardless. Any other questions, Gary?
Oh, back here, Rob. Do you want the log?
You can back up here again. Rob is the expert. You're an expert, Rob, don't you?
No.
It's a driven impression.
So Chris mentioned a couple of major donors that we're looking at. Any one of these donors could easily put up 500,000 pieces. We got these pledged funds, that's one thing. But we got, yesterday, we had six pavers donated, almost $1,500. People are still pledging these pavers. And it's going to go on, but we're going to get closer. We had a bench sold just a few days ago. So we anticipate that we'll have all the funds for Phase 2 and 3 by the end of this year. Once we get this park going, that's when our fundraising is really going to increase. But we're being held up a little bit by not having the park going, because these large donors want to see something. And when they see it, it's going to happen. So fundraising, fundraising with our committee is not going to be a problem. Yeah, we're kind of close on the pledged funds and, but if something, the worst happened, that my company and JMR will finish the park, we'll finish it. It's that important to us. So if we didn't get any of those pledged donations, and we didn't get any more money, we'll make sure it's done. We're motivated, very much motivated.
I think it's pretty impressive, I would, you having, you have game by having such a strong organization. You've really worked so well together. And I had a very nice presentation, like Chris said, I took him out for a presentation, and it was just done so, so well. And so I, you know, I can very expect you guys.
Well, and we just got our 501(c)(3) in November, and we had Thanksgiving and Christmas, where we didn't want to bother people. First of the year, we started doing a few things, and then this hit. And we've gotten close to $700,000. Money will not be an object. But what's going to hurt us is us starting. So, and we really want to get this done for the veterans. We really want to get that done for the veterans.
Thank you, Rob. I appreciate you. Mayor, could I just, one last thing, I'd like to have Martin Knight say with her too. He's probably been in the military longer than any of us. Mark, would you come up and give us a thought, what your thoughts are?
No profanity. I'm just kidding.
My gosh, you're walking in there, wow.
Mayor, thanks, Mayor, thanks for giving me a moment to speak. First of all, I am getting an E-replacement on the 27th of June, and I'll be able to walk.
Happy birthday to me.
That'll be the first time since September.
That's sooner, that's sooner than you thought.
Yeah, it is. They, I went there and I asked them two questions. Who do I have to talk to, and who do I have to kill? I got a phone call the next day and they moved it up. All silliness aside, I just wanted to mention a couple of things, short, a couple of things to the council. The first thing is, is that if you look at the funds that have already been raised, the time period which they were quickly raised, you can understand that the money is going to come. But we really, the Veterans Committee, the veterans in this Southern Davis County, they need a groundbreaking date, so we can get a news story out, so we can get television to report it, so we can get KSF to run an article on it. And once they know that that's happening, it's going to do two things. It's going to have the pledged donors to go ahead and pony up and help with Phase 1. About halfway through Phase 1, we're going to see so much progress and so much news about it, that we're going to be able to go to the Phase 2 donors, the large donors, and say, "Listen, it's going to happen. You don't want to be left out." They already have stated that they want to be part of this. So once they see that something is moving, the big donors will come, and we will fill out Phase 2 and Phase 3. This is a no-loss deal for the city, because at the very least, these companies back here, JMR and the architect, they're going to build a park no matter what, and they're not going to have delays. I know you guys have suffered through a little bit of delays with the City Hall, you've handled it very well. We appreciate that, we understand that. You're not going to have that with the Veterans Park. The Veterans Park is going to come in at zero budget for the city, and it's going to come in on time, and it's going to be one of the greatest amenities of the city. A city now that's known for greater amenities. You've done a great job. And I just wanted to make one more comment, is that this is living proof that y'all could do without me, okay? Thank you for being such good council people, council members and city staff. Thank you so much. You've done a great job, Mayor. Even you have done a good job. Thank you. It's wonderful. Anyways, I just wanted to thank you, and thank you for giving time to the Veterans Committee to ask for a head nod that we can say Phase 1 is going to happen, and maybe give us a groundbreaking date before the dedication date, so that we can get the news media out. We'd like to see you all dressed up real nice and get your pictures taken, okay? In the news media, in the newspaper. Thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, John Martin. It's wonderful to have you here, thank you. So I'm going to face this just a little bit differently than I normally would. Is there anyone here among the council that has any problem with them starting to do the groundwork with the okay of our city engineer Lloyd?
with the okay of our city engineer Lloyd? Once he says it's okay and they've met the requirements of the, the building department, is there anyone here that has a problem with them starting?
Do you want to make a motion?
Yes. I think, I think that'd be really appropriate, I think.
I have a motion that, uh, that you, as a part of, you, after, you, you, that additional, or things, um, that are sweeping.
Second.
Good, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, you're not going to oppose that, are you, Chris? Well, I feel so good about that. You really have done, you really have been amazing, really.
I just want to make one quick comment.
Oh, do it.
I'm truly happy, I'm a military wife, Eric was in the military air force for twenty-four years. I'm very proud to say that I'm a military wife. And, um, one of the things that we are going to do is we are going to recognize in this park, military families. We will hopefully eventually have a monument or a sculpture or something that will, um, represent them and honor them for, because it's not just the servicemen, it is the families left behind that are so important as well. But I just wanted to say this, I was just going through my phone because all the inquiries from our, um, email info@benefitveteranspark.gov or come to me and as of yesterday, from yesterday to today, there, I, I get to go home and respond to seventy-one emails. Because that is the interest that there is in this, um, area of South Davis, to the cities. And you're all aware that this does include Bountiful and then the sister cities around too. So we're trying to get the word out to them as well, that we definitely want them to be on this veteran hall as well. So thank you for your support, I think you're going to be astounded, literally astounded, when you see the beauty of this park. Especially Columbia, she is seven feet tall. And she is so inspiring when you see her, she's got, um, designations of Utah, the Beehive, Seagulls. I mean, it is just so beautiful. And I hope you can tell the passion that we all have for this project. And we'll all be so proud when it's created and that people from everywhere. We hope it's a designation, a destination point for people to come and say, wow, you've got to go see the Bountiful Veterans Park, which not only will be a beautiful honoring place for veterans, but it will be very educational as well. We're hoping to have, um, schools come and do, um, tours and field trips and all kinds of things, um, so that they can really learn a lot about not only veterans, but our country and conflicts and things that we, that we, um, hold so dear to, in our hearts. So thank you, thank you for your vote of confidence in us.
And seventy-one emails?
Seventy-one, are we happy?
I was just going to say, Richard and I get seventy-one emails, they're not all inquiries. Okay, thank you, and we'll go to COVID discussion. Gary.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. I've, uh, given all of you a, um, handout where I tried to summarize what staff and I think are likely scenarios of our ability to open different venues, host different events, based upon the, the different levels of, um, recovery that have been given to us by the state. Um, Galen, I think is going to bring that up here in a second.
Hey, so Gary.
Gathering guidelines.
So Gary, while, while you're bringing that up, I just, you were on the, on the Utah League of Cities and Towns today. I thought that something that was really, I thought was really important to hear today from Lieutenant Governor Cox was that, we, we are not going to have, this was his opinion at this point, we're not going to have, have a vaccine before we go green. But most likely we'll have to have some abilities to treat the COVID before we go completely green. Is that what you heard today, Gary?
You know, I missed that part.
Oh, you did. Well, I thought this was a very, very important part because that's been a question, how are we going to go green? And the, the answer not being, not having to wait until there is a, a, uh, a shock for everybody, but that, uh, there's treatment for everyone, so that was something that was new today.
So with, with council's permission and mayor's permission, what I'd like to do is just walk you through this for a minute and then, um, we have some, a series of questions that we need direction from you on or some discussion on. And then anything else that you have questions on, we'd be happy to answer as staff, um, and, and discuss. Galen, can you zoom in a little bit on that? We'll, we'll just.
I was trying to get.
Why don't we get about half the page on mayor's file, so maybe, yeah, can, can the council, can you all see that? A little bit bigger there. Okay, and then if you'll scroll up to the top. So what I tried to show is that for each of the different phases, there, there are a couple of key, um, directions that we have to follow in order to hold different events or provide different amenities. And for example, we knew in, in one way or the red phase, that we couldn't have group sizes larger than ten, social distancing was required. Um, you'll see that the group size changes through each of the stages, um, until we get to green. Social distancing requirements do not change, um, until we get to green. And so with any of the events that we're holding, we have to keep, those are sort of the lowest common denominator. We have to be able to ensure that group size and/or social distancing. And so for example, the, the first event that we have coming up, and I wouldn't really even call it a thing, is the availability of the food truck we, we posted the last several years. And, um, they're hoping to begin as soon as this Friday, um, although more likely May twenty-second, which would be next Friday. And under those requirements, they, they wouldn't be able to do anything under the red. But we're currently in orange, as I think everyone knows. And, um, there's some question as to whether or not they can meet the group size and social distancing standards. It's clear that they could in yellow and in green based, and these are all based upon the document that the state provided. It's the phasing guidelines four point one. But we believe that food trucks, um, based on what they've done, and Francisco's here to talk more about this, and we'll, we'll come back to the questions, to these policy questions at the end, unless you have questions as we go along. But we believe that the food trucks can probably meet the requirements to, to safely meet based on their current circumstances. If they're doing certain things, such as how they're queuing, that they're emphasizing taking food home, the space we're going to have them in, there's plenty of availability for people to spread out. Summerfest, what they were proposing, which was each Monday night in June, um, we can't see any way that they could, that they could meet until the yellow phase, and even then, actually, that's probably more of a question mark. But the, um, the plaza, excuse me, the Bountiful Town Square is, um, is really limiting factor there anyway because we still have a little bit of construction to do. Farmer's Market, they hope to start around June eighteenth, as soon as June eighteenth. That's a bigger question mark. Basically, we don't have clear direction on what they're going to do with food, with, uh, food trucks. There's some information that was provided to us from Jeremy Holt of, uh, excuse me, of the Farmer's Market, that was provided, that was some guidance through the, Francisco, what was it again?
The Department of Agriculture.
Yeah, they had some guidelines about how to safely hold a, a farmer's market event. And, uh, it's possible. For one thing, you'd have to have all the vendors ten feet apart from one another. You couldn't do anything other than sell food and not, not food on site, but it would be, uh, like food on site, food to consume on site. It couldn't, it couldn't sell, currently under this guidance, they wouldn't be able to sell, um, craps or things like that because that, that impacts whether or not they're an essential service. I believe, and I think Francisco believes, that there's going to be some additional guidance that we're going to get that will help make that decision. We don't have to make those decisions tonight. Anyway, this is just to give you an idea of kind of what we're looking at as we're looking forward to some of these events. Concerts in the park, I can't see any way that we could hold that until we get to yellow and even then I think it's questionable because of that's gathering standards. We're just going to have to see as we get closer, I don't think, again, I think we can reserve judgment on that. We have, and the contracts that we're building in now, all of them are, uh, there's cancellation clause that if we have to cancel, but it doesn't cost the city anything. And, uh, as we get to some of the other events, particularly the Coats for Kids Car Show, as staff looked at it, there's just, there's no good way to control how close people are together. There's so many people that come to that event, that the vendors are so close together that to, to staff, it seemed almost impossible to be able to hold that under those guidelines. Turns out that Chris has a little more to say about that.
Can you say, Mayor, today, the, uh, the executive committee of Bountiful Rotary Club met and we've canceled Coats for Kids. The shift, so it's canceled.
Really?
Yeah, and I didn't know that until the meeting. We sort of came to those conclusions independently, but, um, it, it's just impossible to maintain social distancing. We can't, we can't do it.
So you're, it's not going to happen on August twenty eighth?
Well, as of, as of apparently this afternoon, they've, they have decided to cancel, is that right, Chris?
Yes, we decided to cancel. It's a social distancing, it's the number of people that are going to be there, uh, it's the cars and people are wanting to register and have their cars there. It's just, uh, the social distancing is the problem. You just can't be that close together. We're coming up with an alternate plan of, uh, a video, maybe YouTube app, that we will show. The car show event, and you can participate in it by going on, presenting your car on a video that we'll put together and show. As far as people being in there, we'll be, you know, here.
The Chuck Art Festival is, is questionable too, if we're still in an orange or a yellow phase come, um, September. There's less lead time, somewhat less lead time for that, but as far as they're concerned, they're still moving forward with it. We, I think we would certainly like to host it if, if they're willing to. But again, those decisions don't need to be made tonight. You can kind of look over the, the rest of, of that matrix as we, as we discuss. So I'd kind of like to jump down to the, um, some of the policy questions. And, and begin the discussion there on, on what we see are the next decisions that we need, we need to make or at least we need to discuss as a group. The first is kind of food trucks. Francisco, if you don't mind, why don't you come up to the, to the podium? He's been speaking quite a bit with the food truck group. Why don't you tell, um, the council what you learned today and how things have been going or something, and what your thoughts are about it.
Can I, let me ask you a question. So today, for the first time, I saw a food truck in Cabana's parking lot with a long line. Anybody else see that today? Yeah, there was a long line, it's, uh, Alaska Bread, Cod, Fish and Chips, and there was a line all day. Yeah, so I.
Were the people in line?
They were, they were in line going more than they were separated. They, they had, they, most of them had masks, most of them, all of them were six feet apart. But there were twenty or thirty in the line all day on today.
Wow.
Yeah, so I just didn't know how they did that or, uh, I hadn't seen that before.
Yeah, I haven't seen that either. And, and I'm not quite sure if they have a permit through my office, which they're supposed to, so we can also check on that just to make sure that they, that they're following specific protocol. But I, I just want to report that I've had, uh, I've been in communication for the last three weeks probably now with the food truck league and they've been, um, they, they're flexible as far as starting this Friday, the fifteenth or the twenty-second. And, and we're holding off on that, on signing off a contract that gets signed through Mr. Gary Hill. They reported that they did start at North Salt Lake, uh, Food Truck League, not this Monday, but the Monday before last, and they had, um, quite a successful night where they, they, they didn't think they were going to have that many people. And, uh, they are able to, um, provide that or, or shift that responsibility to each food truck operator to comply with the guidelines established by the state, supported by the county. And, uh, what they have, some of them, they reported that they, they put a table up front, so it forces distancing at that food truck window. Others just put up a cone. I think that by now people are used to seeing that, that circle at the grocery store, that X, and you know that we're, that's where we're supposed to stand. So they, they are working on self policing. Also, the food truck league themselves are doing some spot checking to see if they're complying or not. And, and the, the social distancing is just one component of the rules and regulations that they have to abide by. Uh, with that said, if, if they catch anybody not complying with them, they'll give them a warning during the second infraction or whatever, they'll, they'll go ahead and shut them down and put them on a timeout for thirty days as they have a circuit they rotate based on bottom line area and reliability. And, and that's part of their business model as they, they go through a lot of food trucks throughout, um, their, their, their whole event. So, uh, they, they, like I said, they are flexible to get going either this Friday or the following. Uh, they, they do believe that, uh, we, that's a successful event for Bountiful where based on the season, they would love to have six trucks, uh, this week if they start or the following with eight trucks. And, and just to, um, indicate or, or, or we forgot to mention simply is that we would start at the current, um, police city hall campus as we're waiting for the Bountiful Town Square to be completely finished and then we would transition over. So in, in the contract, whatever we sign, we would of course want to move to Bountiful Town Square. The difficulty that we had with the Bountiful Town Square is that it was designed to congregate, that it, it was meant for that. So, uh, we kind of had to be careful as we simply want to follow the protocols established by the state and county as far as social distancing. And, and one more thing I need to point out, as far as, uh, branding this year, on their website, the food truck league is, is calling it takeout night. To imply, no, don't stay here, go home or go somewhere else. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. Um, we, we're flexible with, with either date, uh, so the, the fifteenth or the twenty-second, and so are they. But they do, um, forecast that they'll have a successful season here in Bountiful City. Yeah, in reviewing the version 4.1 of the, of the state's standards, I didn't see anything regarding Washington Station. There was something similar, I believe, for the farmer's market, but I didn't see anything on there. And we did do a thorough review of the paperwork, so I don't believe it is a requirement, and if there was, it wouldn't be our responsibility, just in case I did miss anything. Obviously, for each food truck, before they're able to operate, they have to go through the permitting process through the county, and they go specifically through the health department for that. So I'm pretty sure that they have to have some within their kitchen, within their preparation area, but I don't believe that they have to have anything for the public. Sure. The only issue that I would, that I say we need to be careful is that if we set it up for such, maybe more people will want to congregate, and will add to the problem. So I think, I think the way that they're treating it is, please go home, please go somewhere else. We're under this directive by the governor and the county, they didn't want to keep on providing that service to the community.
I'd like to see them be able to operate as soon as possible. I mean, I think that if they can do it this week, and do it safely, and follow the health department's guidelines, then I think that'd be great.
They did report back that the first night at North Salt Lake, it was a little bit tougher. Granted, it was their second year in their program, and the second night, last night, went much better.
My opinion is that as well, if they've got protocol compliance, if that's on them, I'd be in favor of allowing them to operate.
I agree.
You know, one other point, just to be clear on, is that as staff, we, we would treat this a lot like parks. We would not be enforcing groups sitting together.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You know, that would not be our intention unless you told us otherwise. And we may get complaints, chances are, we will get complaints, but it would be our policy to explain to the public that we're gonna let, we're gonna let reasonable people make reasonable decisions.
Well, I think we need to do everything we can to let small businesses reopen and regain their livelihoods.
And also, from what was shared from the Food Truck League, it seems like they really want to make it work. So each food truck operator is saying, here's your food, keep it by your business, they want to keep on selling.
The next couple can go pretty quick. We had held off on allowing new Bowery rentals. Any that were made before, we sort of pulled the brakes about a month and a half ago. We allowed it to stand, but we haven't been letting new people make Bowery rentals, or at least we've been saying, wait until we get direction beginning of May. It's our recommendation that we go ahead and let people reserve Boweries beginning from March, beginning the 15th, really, so as we can, it takes just a couple of days to get them set up. And likewise, I think we've crossed that threshold of where the mess of not having open bathrooms and the hassle has exceeded the mess and hassle of having open bathrooms. Brock's working with vendors to try and get soap dispensers and things. We've talked about a lot of different options, even just, you know, donating soap bars, but they all end up turning into crayons and chalk for walls. So we're gonna do what we can, but we're suggesting that we go ahead and open the restrooms in the community. And even though we won't have the ability, any greater ability than we really have in the past, to let people sanitize, at least they'll be able to use the restrooms on the inside instead of the outside.
That sounds good. Can I ask a question while we're talking about parks?
Sure.
I would really like us to be able to allow, allow children and families to use playgrounds. Why, why do we need to wait on that?
It has to do with gathering, from what I understand, and the touching of the surfaces, that it's, the explanation that's been given to me in the meetings I've been in, both at the county and the state, is that it's impossible to maintain social distancing with kids on playgrounds. And that's, and it also, the more kids you have on playgrounds, the more families are gonna be there as well. So that's, that's the answer. It is. Yeah, yeah, it is in the county order. We don't, we don't really have the decision.
So the county, the county health department is saying playgrounds are not allowed to be open?
Correct.
So we anticipate, so yellow, the yellow phase, they can?
Yes, if I'm remembering right. Social distancing is still required, but they're saying that the risk is low enough at that point that they'd be comfortable having playgrounds open.
So do we have a date? Do we have a tentative date?
The meeting on the conversation we had yesterday, the question was raised about yellow. You had a mayor or two who was saying we ought to petition the state for yellow. The health director and the health department was not comfortable with that. They said it, they said that their role really is implementing what the governor's guidelines are, and he didn't feel like we were ready to do that. But if the political leaders in the county wanted to petition, they should work with the county commissioners to see about an early opening, or moving to yellow sooner than the rest of the state does. As part of that conversation, he didn't see, he didn't Brian Hatch, didn't see that immediately we'd be going to yellow, but, you know, we have kind of plateaued on our cases, even though we saw an increase this last week, we're still hovering around anywhere between 35 to 15 to 35 new cases a week. He was hopeful that within two or four weeks, that's a possibility. I'm not, I don't want to overstate it, I don't think he didn't commit, he didn't commit to that, but that was the impression I received from what he was saying, is that not sooner than two, but possibly within four. Continue to see plateauing of new cases.
Just reporting from this morning, this board meeting, is that the governor, the current, the current commands are done on the 15th, so this Friday, and so before Friday, the governor will, he will make some more directives and place some more orders. And Lieutenant Governor Cox said today, he doesn't know what those will be, but they could be, it could be phased in from different areas in the state, different counties, getting different things. But no one knows for sure what the governor's gonna say, but either tomorrow, or most likely Thursday, they'll learn a lot more, and what they, what they say at the state level, it will, it will turn up the, the, the.
Just my opinion, which is a broken record on this subject, I know, please abide me just a little bit longer. The provisions of the state's position are that counties and district health departments can apply for an exemption and move more quickly through the phases. And if our numbers warrant that, let's have a backbone and do it. Just an opinion.
I know St. George has already, St. George has asked for that exemption, it's not been given.
My, my personal opinion on what we expect to see, not, not, what I expect to see the state do and the county do, is that because of the lag time in, in cases, from when it's contracted to when it shows up and it's counted, that they're probably waiting two or three weeks from when we went from red to orange, to see if there's any increase, any substantial increase in cases. I guess that they're gonna stay on Friday at orange for at least two more weeks.
But there's also more cases, because now there's more testing. So of cour, you know what I mean? I just, are we, is it being put into context correctly? I'm not a health expert, but it's just something I struggle with.
Yeah. Well, and one of the things that they have shown is that in spite of the increased testing, we're not seeing significant new numbers of cases at least count, which is really, which is really positive. But this is just my, that's just my guess. I mean, I just rubbed the old crystal ball, and that's what I came up with based on what I hear.
Well, and Brian said today that he's not so much even concerned about the new cases that have been, that have been down, but more how serious the cases have been, whether they're hospitalizations or not, and if they're clustered. So there, he's not so much concerned with the fact that we went here in Bountiful up 15 this last week, 15 in there, from 70 to 85. I mean, 15's quite a few people. But he's not really that, he said today, he's not really concerned about that, because those people were not, did not look like any of them would, would be.
Hospitalized?
Hospitalized.
Move on to farmer's market?
Yep.
We talked a little bit about that, Francisco, you want to share what you're, what you've heard from Jared Nibolt?
Trish, you heard?
Trish, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that the state didn't necessarily provide anything on the Utah Leads Together documentation and all those guidelines. However, as indicated earlier, the Utah Department of Agriculture and Food provided some guidelines specifically for farmer's markets, and Gary already hit the main points, such as shall not have food service vendors, and shall not have arts and craft vendors. Everything else would be, would be the same, and they're looking at the 18th, I'm sorry, I forgot, it's the 18th or 25th of June. So we have more time to figure that one out, specifically as Mayor Lewis just indicated, on the 15th, the state could change what the guidelines are, or could add them, as we may stay in orange. But I think that we've got a little bit more time to figure that one out. That one, we foresee that we will be ready to go up Bountiful Town Square, not at the City Park, down in Fort Moreland, Southern West. And they, they, they sent us the document, we verified it, and it is the latest and greatest dated April 21st, 2020, and they feel comfortable that they could meet all of these specific guidelines from the Department of Agriculture and Food.
May I ask one question? Is the crafts, I'm having a hard time understanding why we wouldn't allow that, when you can go to Michael's and get a craft, or you can go to Target and get a craft.
And I couldn't, I couldn't answer that.
No, I know, but I'm just, I'm hoping it's something that we.
I think, I think what they're trying to do is focus more on food chain supply and providing food, other than creating an atmosphere and an event for people to spend some time and enjoy. I think, I think that's their logic, goes back to limiting that social distancing, because the guidelines are very robust in terms of one family member per household could attend, attend and purchase the produce, so it's not something that I could take my wife, hold hands, and go buy our, our stuff. So I think, I think the intention, the intention is simply for food production, to sell that food.
Well, and I have maybe another theory. The date on that guideline is?
April 21st.
April 21st. I think they wrote it for what was essentially red, before red existed.
Yeah.
I think they were writing it for the conditions as they existed at the time. And so I think you would see, if they were to rewrite that document now, I think it'd be pretty different.
I would hope so. I just hope we're using common sense as we go through all of these things. So, and I know that you're the messenger, and I, I'm so grateful.
And we are waiting for the county, as the health department, or it was Economic Development, and I went on a wild goose chase and sent some voicemail and emails, and we'll have more information, obviously, by the end of June, whether it's the 18th or the 25th. So, and obviously, we'll have updated documents, hopefully, from the state.
My feeling, and I think, as Francisco and I have talked, I'm speaking for him, but I think when it comes down to when, when it's time for the food, or the farmer's market to start, that we would rely more on the county guidelines than we would on, on this Department of Agricultural document, on what their requirements would be. You know, we look at spacing and group size and things like that, but we appreciated the fact that, we didn't even know that document, I didn't know that document existed before today. So at least there's, somebody's thinking about what farmer's markets should be doing, but probably not the daily.
Yeah, and I don't think that it'll be a challenge, but we'll have to coordinate accordingly, because as, and my indications from my communication with the county, it seems like a farmer's market are not so much regulated through their special event or their mass gathering permit, but it's more so regulated by the state and the Department of Agriculture. So we're still learning.
And they don't give us information right now about this particular, rather than asking us to okay a certain thing.
Right, we're just trying to find direction as far as COVID. Absolutely, absolutely, all right. If I could add one more thing, I'm sorry, it's about the playgrounds. And I do have the entire document from me, and obviously, as the mayor indicated, it may change, but both in orange and yellow, it says the same thing. Avoid contact with high touch surfaces, including handrails, trail signs, and maps, and do not congregate at trail heads, parks, or other outdoor spaces. So that's gonna be the challenge, if we do go to yellow, that I think playgrounds through the state are still going to be closed. Again, unless the state comes back with the version 4.2 or 1. Just want to get that in. Thank you, thank you.
If I could point out as well, that thus far, we have had zero enforcement of the gathering at trailheads at any of our trailheads, and having been a frequent hiker in Mueller Park since the COVID began, I know that there have been groups of folks. So I'm glad we're not in the enforcement business, and I would encourage us to stay out of the enforcement business going forward. If groups want to use our facilities, and they have protocol that will at least assure us that they're worried about safety, then I think that the smart thing for us to do is to continue to stay out of enforcement and stay into allowing people to be adults and have personal responsibility for their decisions. Just an opinion.
Well, we've kind of gathered, the direction we've taken is from you all and from the conversations we've had, is to do just that, which really to limit access, but not to enforce if people are behaving or not, so.
It's really the policy all over, that's a policy for the county as well, has been since the beginning.
So does that mean we can take off the caution tape around playgrounds?
What's that?
I'm just playing devil's advocate, sorry, excuse me. I said, so does that mean we can take off the caution tape around playgrounds?
No.
Somebody's already doing that almost every day.
Still.
So Dog Park?
Yeah, Park Park, so just the guideline says 20 people now can get together. We're recommending going and increasing the limit to 20 people to be consistent. And FYI, we're installing the posts now for the privacy fence that's going up between the neighbors. Just so you're aware, there's a gap. That fence is not replacing the existing fence, which would have been much more expensive, because it would have required us to replace everybody's landscaping, and so there's a gap between their fence and our fence, which is wide enough to allow some maintenance as well, and not disrupt people's existing career on their fence, so.
Beautiful.
Are they happy with that?
No.
So we're all okay?
One more tongue-in-cheek thing about the Dog Park, if I could, Mayor. I think that we need to limit it to 20 people, or people and animals, for people who think that animals are people. So if you could have a surveyor at the gate and limit it to that, we would like declarations from each participant that they recognize the difference between animals and people.
Miranda actually volunteered to do that.
Oh, super. Thank you. And by the way, there's a group that has policed themselves wonderfully. I'm just saying. Exactly, exactly. No, it's been great. I drive by there a lot, I like the place, and it's been very well observed.
They're a little more responsible than Sierra Playground and football users.
There you go.
Be able to go.
Okay. Tim Miller at South Davis Rec just asked if the city had any problem with them using our fields as they have in the past, if and when they're ready to start hosting some of their field space. I said, I didn't think there'd be a problem, but we were meeting tonight, I'd run it past the council. They would, they have to meet all their own requirements for activities, but I didn't see a reason why the city could just let them use the field space and courts and things like we had in the past.
Right, and some of us might see that, see on some of the fields, teams like at Mueller Park or something, practicing baseball. If it's just their own team, and they're not playing competitively against somebody else, that's allowed within the rules, that there are now. Their rules are there, as long as they're social distancing, if you can't social distance, if you're playing another team, I know it's crazy, but you can't, but you can use the fields.
So, no concerns there?
But I don't think we have any.
Now, a fun one, maybe an innovative one. We're beginning to get questions about deer again, and the ability, our ability to host a public meeting that might attract a number of people that would want to come, is gonna be really limited for probably a while.
So you're saying this is the ideal time to do the deer removal discussion?
Almost. What I'm suggesting is that we, is that we fulfill our own self-imposed public input a different way, that we reach out through media and do something more akin to what Forest Service and others do, which is they have a public comment period, and we solicit comments, and people provide them, and then we provide that to you, rather than a public period setting. Uh, I'm afraid if we don't do that, we're going to be so far behind the eight mall when it comes to fall time to implement deer that we're going to be stuck with another season of doing nothing. And-
So, so I'm sorry, I guess I'm, I guess I'm confused. You're asking that we have like an open house kind of thing, you're asking?
I'm asking that elected, that we, we advertise that we're soliciting public comment electronically from people. And that they would, there would be an open comment period like you have in, say, a, a federal lethal process or some other federal process where it's impractical to ask people to come to a meeting. And so you, you just take comments electronically, we then provide that to you and then you give us direction in a city council meeting, um, to move forward, uh, with the program.
Are we, are we supposed to publish a communication now for proposals doing X, please comment? Or are we saying generally just comment? How do you feel about here?
Oh, good question. Um, my feeling based on the retreat was that we were going to tell people we are, we are limited now to lethal removal if we're going to do anything. The city's plan is to do lethal removal by trapping and euthanizing deer. Please comment.
And these are the reasons why?
Yeah. So that was, that was, that would be my suggestion, basically what I thought I heard at the retreat, unless you wants to do something different.
Still, still the same.
Yeah.
You're going to make a lot of people really happy, and then there will be a few people who will be mad, but. You can give my phone.
Okay. Thanks.
Please, my work number, or my cell. Don't, don't make my home number or name. Hey, great, that's great, we'd like to move forward on that. Um, and then just an update on utility payments. Um, we met today for a while, those of us that have utility departments, the utility department directors and utility building, we're, we're a little concerned about where this is headed. We have typically in a month, we'll have about 90 shut offs. Um, you know, 90 people on a shut off list, we're, we now have about 900 people on the shut off list.
What?
Which suggests that people are taking advantage of our generosity. Um, and it's going to be probably harder and harder the longer the situation goes to ramp things back for people. We're just, we're a little concerned, uh, about our ability and the wisdom of, for our utilities to continue to let people, uh, not pay their bills. A number of the people that are on that list were already before we, we put in the moratorium, were already four or five months behind. So these weren't situations where, uh, in, in many cases where this was something that was prompted by COVID-19, but it certainly has made it worse and easier for those people not to pay. Um, the challenge is, is once you get so far behind, as we all know with, um, just human nature and the people that we know, not ourselves, that if you get so far behind, you never catch up. And we may end up, if we let this go too far, we may end up having to just write off pieces, losses. So we're, we're kind of proposing a two-phase approach to this as we talk to staff today. And Gail, and you can jump in if I miss anything. Um, we want to really aggressively reach out to the people that are on the shut off list and encourage them to pay either starting a payment plan now, uh, or even potentially offering, uh, a reduction on, on a back due amount of some portion, a 5% or 10% reduction if they'll catch up now. Uh, but really aggressively want to, more than just using Mary Ann, who's our shut off person, some of the other departments to reach out. We want to do it through email and, um, phone calls and, uh, letters to these folks that are on the list to encourage them to get caught up now. Uh, we'll, we know we'll see a certain percentage of people that will do that. But we also have asked staff to work and put together a more refined, um, amnesty plan uh, that targets people who are really in need. Uh, we don't know what that looks like yet, uh, but it'd be more towards people who are unemployed as opposed to a general policy now where we're just not, we're not shutting off anybody. But we're, we're watching this trend and we're kind of concerned. Love to know your, your thoughts, counsel, which direction you'd like us to go, uh, if we want, if you want us to wait to implement this. Just, what are your feelings?
Well, I just have a question of how, I guess it would just be through personal outreach in finding out who has a job and who doesn't have a job? Is that your hope, and it's just you're taking their word for it? I mean, I want to be sensitive to it, but I'm just wondering how we're going to navigate it, because I think that's a wise course.
In the first step, we would actually also be surveying people to get a sense of why people aren't paying in these letters and, and emails we're sending out. And again, we don't know the details yet either, but one idea that we kicked around that is that gift that we have done in the past with, for example, when there, when there were people on active, sort of active military service. The burden was on them to prove that, that they met the requirements to, for their utility bills to be waived or delayed. And so we would have to come up with something where we would, they would be notified of a potential shut off and then if they came in and demonstrated, met our criteria, demonstrated they met our criteria, then we could not. The burden would be on them. But again, that's, you know, this is after one conversation.
Yeah.
The smart people, Gail, Tyson, Ted, you know, Mark, Alan are going to be putting their heads together to work on this process.
I think it's reasonable, um, to, to start doing something and I think it's wise to do it soon because, um, yeah, I think, uh, it's, it's easy to let that problem snowball. And, and so it's, it's actually helpful for them to see it as a priority sooner rather than later, so it doesn't, they don't get further behind. And so I like the idea of reaching out in multiple ways and I think too, um, I don't know if, if you've considered this, but I know that there's programs out there where you can text, like from the city's phone number, you could text. I just think reaching out in multiple ways makes it easier for them to respond, whether it's an email or a text. And sometimes we don't have our right email address or, you know, but, um, just reaching out in multiple ways, I think it's good to try to catch, catch people in a method that they prefer using or that might be easy for them to respond to.
Yeah, it's, it's, I think it's a really good idea, uh, to reach out as many ways as we can. So the, the league typically has not gotten to that level of detail, but the Utah City Managers Association does and has. Um, and we have a listserv where somebody will send out a question and ask what everybody else is doing. We've used that here when we've had questions about some of our programs. Um, the conversations that have been happening up to this point have been more about what programs cities are putting into place. I would, I dare say that we're ahead of the curve when it comes to looking at the impacts in Bountiful. Nobody's asked that question yet. I don't think cities have looked at their data yet. Um, I wouldn't be surprised in the next month if we don't start to, unless I'm missing some emails, Gail, and I, has anybody else asked that question yet?
No, I guess.
Yeah, I think we just happen to have a couple of department heads who have been watching our, what's happening with our shut offs really closely. So no, I think we're leaving, I think in this case we're leaving, we're charged.
My other question would be, um, if people are facing a shut off, if they see it across the board, but if they see it on power and water or, or only facing it in one area?
So we typically will only shut off the power, um, as opposed to power and the water, because it's, we can do that, we can do that remotely or more easily, you know, to go and shut off water, is that right, Gail? I'm beginning to get it right.
So are they delinquent across all their utilities or are they delinquent, is it scattered? Or someone only delinquent on power but their current on water? That's kind of discheated form of process with bills for all services.
So they're delinquent on their bill regardless if it's, yeah, we don't distinguish between paying down the water or power bills. It's just if they're delinquent on their bill, we shut off their power or, as Gail said, water and power.
So then that's-
Yeah, right now it's about a quarter of a million dollars. And that's, and that's the 25% higher than typical with this, you know, uh, it's 25% increase over what we would normally see and growing. So, so yeah, it's, it's not insignificant.
It seems like we need, we need to follow the plan that we've all decided on.
So the next, uh, aid bill supposedly is going to deal with municipalities, counties and states and the costs incurred for this. Or any of the costs that they've talked about, recovery of, uh, utility fees, it's not, okay?
That might, their, the next aid bill might be revenue replacement. But, but, you know, politically, you've seen some of the comments that are out there that, you know, uh, and some of it's posturing, we understand, you know, cities can just declare bankruptcy, we don't care. I think that's just posturing from what we've heard. But, uh, another option is that they, is that they, that they expand what the money in the current CARES Act, which is can only be used for direct cost related to COVID response. Um, it may be that they expand what that money can be used for and then instead of just recovery or just, uh, big direct expenses, we might go use that for revenue replacement. I'm not really holding my breath for any revenue replacement from the federal government. I'm not counting on it. I, I don't, if it becomes great, but I don't expect, I don't expect it, yeah. Which is good, because we've never planned on, on opening the federal government to bail out Bountiful cities, so.
It's interesting, the emphasis placed on that by some of our sister cities in the National League of Cities. It's everything to them.
And it's no, it's not surprise either based on the, right, the amount of time that they spend at some of those conferences on getting federal grants.
Right.
Yeah, and we're, we're in a good position really, all things considered, but. Um, thank you for the direction on that. The last one I had was, um, Brock scheduled the fireworks. Um, we're planning on having them that Friday night of what would have been the last night of Hancock Days, which is the 7th. Um, turns out we can't do it, you know, it's just a credit for the next year, but we're, we're scheduled, uh, at this point for fireworks.
Could, could you describe for me, Gary, a possible scenario whereby we couldn't do it?
A, a direct, right now it would be a direct, I think, it would be, based on my reading of the guidelines, it would have to be something, a new direction from the governor specifically related to fireworks. I can't see anything in the guidelines where we could not, where we, where we couldn't do it.
Right.
I mean, uh, basically we would just tell, we probably would not open up Mueller Park.
Exactly.
Um, and we would tell everybody else, hey, just maintain social distancing, watch your homes, watch, watch, spread out. And, and I think if we shut down Mueller Park, I can't see why we could do it.
Since everything else is canceled and not that a date necessarily makes a difference, what would the likely could be that we could switch that to the 24th itself and just do our own fireworks on the 24th?
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great question. It's nothing, it's easy, it'd be easy to do if we wanted to. The only thing would be the, um, the concert in the park, um, that the Hancock State Committee wanted to have at the same time. But there's no reason we couldn't have that on the 17th, fireworks, actually on the 24th.
Is North Salt Lake still doing their 4th of July?
No, they're not doing their 4th.
Maybe you do-
Most of Davis County, I'm not sure if there's anyone in Davis County other than us that would do fireworks.
No, we've sort of been conscientious objectors.
Yep.
When it comes to fireworks.
Yep.
Um, so what are your thoughts about the 24th versus 17th?
I like the 24th and say everyone else is not.
What day of the week?
Right.
Or, or is the 4th an option?
We'll see. TBD, Chris, TBD. Did you hear Melly's question?
I did.
Is the, is the 4th an option?
I don't know.
The 24th is usually, like, down at-
Sure.
No, I understand that, but if it's not, I'm just, does one outweigh, does one holiday outweigh the other?
I just think it gives us more time.
Yeah.
I will ask, um, I'll ask and see if that'll be available before.
How about both days?
I, I like that.
It's just a question of budget.
What about every week? So do we have other items, Gary?
I like that. No, um, I will, but I will, I will need to call up with your fast one if we're going to change it from the 4th, from the 24th to 4th. Because Brock talked to me today and they're trying to lock in the dates, the vendors, when they are available. So if you're serious about the 4th.
I think the 4th would be fun, but I like the 24th just because we usually, just for consistency, because in Danville we usually celebrate for Hancock Days, but I like it when-
I would probably prefer the 4th, just since we already have an activity on the 24th with the concert in the park.
We don't have it on the 24th.
I mean, the 17th, excuse me, but that's in, that's in lieu of Hancock Days. That would be my-
What day of the week is 4th?
Preference. But if it has to be on the 24th to give us more time, then obviously I would defer to that.
Gary, can you find out about availability of the 4th?
Yep.
And then let us know?
Yeah.
It'd be nice to step in and maintain some sort of celebration on Independence Day.
Anything else, Gary?
No, thank you.
Just, just before we dismiss, just a couple of things. I think this is, will really be interesting to you. So talking to Ken up at the golf course, he took three weekends in April from last year and three weekends this year in April, nine day total days. Last year in those nine days, they had over 160 people not show up for reservations that they had made. This year they pay online, before they come, they had five people not show up.
Wow.
That equates to $8,000 more in revenue. So guess what the new policy is? I just thought that was pretty amazing. And, and the golf course, those of you who don't play golf, may not know this, but we had that problem a couple of years ago with the greens and everything. Golf course is really as beautiful as I've ever seen that golf course. And it is so busy up there every day and all day long. Normally on a Saturday afternoon after 3:00, there's no one on that golf course. I mean, that's the issue and they're taking reservations till 6:35 on Saturdays. It is very, very busy. Uh, last of all, um, so I got a call today, uh, from Senator Mitt Romney. And he just talked to me for 15 minutes about Bountiful today. And, uh, he wanted to know, uh, he wanted to know how we were doing. He said, Bountiful's always been a real special place to him and of course his number one person in Utah is Matt Anderson. And he, he is from Bountiful. And, uh, he wanted, he wanted to know about, uh, you know, our, uh, our COVID-19 folks. And he was friends obviously with, uh, with Bob Garth, uh, for a long, long time. So he, I think that was one of the reasons that he wanted to know how those families, uh, were doing. And, uh, they, uh, he wanted to thank the city council specifically, he said, I told him we were having a city council, but he said, would you please tell that city council, thank you for their service? He said, that's really where, that's really where things really happen in our country. And, uh, and he just said he hoped that the residents would be safe and that they would have their jobs or if they don't have jobs, they'll get them back. And, and then he, he asked me, he said, you asked the city council, is there, what's, what can I do for them? What, what can I do for the city? And he said, and then he gave me a, a charge to get back with them about anything that, uh, is reasonable to, uh, to ask him, uh, if we need him for something, very specific. Other than one of the statues and a bench.
Yes.
Yeah, and certainly Congressman Stewart wants to help there too, so, well, that's really a good one. That's a good one, Kate. We have got good people, Randy Allen, that's taken from his mission and standpoint and found, he's taken a real, a real deep with that. Gary, can we talk about this more then? And to Kate's, clear what to be, and so that I have something specific to get back with him about.
Um, just, I wanna thank Kate for kind of running interference on the discussion on utopia and Bountiful. If you haven't been contacted about it already, you probably will. There's a group actively pursuing signature gathering to put that in front of us to potentially bring utopia in. Additionally, I don't know if anybody else has gotten phone calls or emails, but there's some discussion at Kent about possible land swap with a piece of property north of Mueller Park Canyon and the property around the cottage, so. Keep your ear open.
Things to talk about and think about.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, okay, awesome.
Purchase that, purchase that property, right? That's great, that's a great idea. Can I ask, are we meeting twice in June?
No, right now we're just meeting the one time on the 16th, we spent mid-month.
And are we, will we have the option to meet electronically or will we just be assuming that we're meeting in person?
Yeah, we'll still have the ability to meet electronically, I believe that, I can't remember how long that state law goes through. But for a while, so we'll have the ability to meet electronically at that meeting as well.
We are still meeting on the 26th.
And we are still meeting on the 26th. And we'll take that work session time to talk about the budget on the 26th.
Okay. So I have a motion to dismiss.
So moved.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
So be it.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for the green microphone cover.